Good evening, I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and to help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Warner, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Mr. Campbell, Ms. Harris, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Lee Bowman, Mr. Long, Ms. Lemoine, Ms. Dyser, Ms. Rodney, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Warner, and Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. First item on the agenda tonight are the communications update and super news. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. All right, so I have your communications update packet in front of you for October. In the packet you'll see all of our press releases that we've done this month, social media statistics and numbers, as well as a bulleted list of what you're going to see on super news tonight, which is featuring Arlene Miro Elementary and W. Smith Elementary. The last press release that we just released today was our Students of the Year, and we did our Teachers of the Year last week. So we have some pretty exciting things in this packet and on our super news. So enjoy.
There were mentors in the library.
A vampire onstage.
And a real saint in one of our gymnasiums.
All these stories and more.
On this edition of Super News. Hello and welcome to Super News, where we take a look back at all the good things happening in our school system.
We'll kick things off with a trip to the kitchen, as things were definitely cooking at Shawmet High School recently, when chef Melissa Aruho visited Elena Hodges' Pro-Start class. Aruho, a renowned chef with 30 years' experience in the restaurant business, shared her passion for the culinary arts.
During her time with the students, she demonstrated plating techniques, told stories of her cooking journey, and shared delicious bites. She also offered life lessons and strategies for success.
Chicken, you always have to cook chicken. You can't have chicken meat rare or rare. You cannot. You will get samarala. That is impossible. You have to cook the chicken well done. Now, when it comes to steaks, pork, you can cook pork medium. You know, that's the best temperature to cook it. Not medium rare. No, 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 no. Medium. Overdone, when you cook it overdone, you know, you cook it well done, you're not eating the nutrients of the meat.
And now, we'll go from food to blues, as we take a look at some of the talent on hand at the Cultural Arts Center, when the New Orleans Blues Society visited and performed for our students. Blues Society is a nonprofit organization with a mission to preserve the past, support the present, and promote the future through music and education.
Aspiring musicians and lovers of music took part in this excursion to learn about the origins, the composition, and the techniques used in this very original American art form. It was an enjoyable experience for all who participated, and we'd like to thank our partners at the Miro Foundation for making the blues in the schools possible.
Also taking place on Shawmet High's campus was the Women's Professional Network High School Mentoring Program. Hosted by the St. Bernard Chamber, this annual event brings in an array of professionals from all walks of life to our campus to meet with some of our high school students.
In addition to learning about the backgrounds and educational experiences of our presenters, the students also had time to ask questions and listen to some of the inspiring stories from these special guests. It was a great morning of mentorship and a reminder of the importance of making good decisions.
I gave a presentation to all the beautiful girls who were invited about mindset and the power of your thoughts and how watering the seeds of positivity and self-confidence are really the key to setting you up for success and creating the life that's really going to make you happy and fulfilled.
And now, let's head to Violet to meet our super news team at the home of the superstars, Smith Elementary.
Hi, I'm Italy.
And I'm Leila. And welcome to W. Smith Elementary and our super news segment.
We'll begin with a look at some of the talented students who are a part of our music program. Currently, we have 12 students in chorus and 11 students on the drum line, as well as a number of band students who practice during the day.
Practicing is a really important part of learning, and we are proud to report that our school was one of the recent winners of a recent iReady challenge. Our students had a low number of rush flags on our first diagnostic, which means we really took our time.
We also had a math-loving monster named Snarg visit our school to congratulate us on our good work.
Getting our families involved in our learning has been another highlight to our school year, like the Mom and Me Day, when moms were invited to our classrooms to do an activity, have a treat, and take a selfie. It was a lot of fun.
We also brought our grandparents back to school with our goodies with grands event. Our grandparents visited us, shared treats, played bingo, completed an About Me activity sheet, participated in a dance-off, and visited our book fair.
Hey, Italy, maybe one day we could invite our grandparents to school to do some yoga.
Yoga? I think that would be quite a stretch for them.
Moving on, our Smith teachers also participated in a TBRI training, which is a trust-based model for helping us grow both in and out of the classrooms. Staff members worked together in exploring ways to connect with all of us.
And just as our staff is terrific, so too were the students who took part in our recent terrific kids ceremony when the Kawani Club was here to honor our Students of the Month.
There's a lot happening here, and we are glad you visited with us today. Now, back to you guys. Bye.
Nice job, superstars.
And speaking of stars, field trips to the MoMA Center continue at the Planetarium. Recently, classes of 5th graders and kindergarten students visited the site to learn about space, the constellations, and a number of other cool cosmic offerings.
There were also stars onstage when the CHS Live Drama Club presented Dracula: A Comedy of Terrors. This horror comedy show was a zany look into the world of creepy castles and comedy.
I can't. I can't finally kill another being, no matter how monstrous. Technically, I'm already dead. Still, do I need to mention, "I kissed your girlfriend"? It is over, and so am I. Sophie! That hasn't been invented yet!
Congratulations to the creative team that brought this show to life. It truly was a fang-tastic production.
And now, let's buzz over to Arlene Miro Elementary and see what's happening there at the home of the bees.
Hello from Arlene Miro Elementary, where reading interventions are underway. This year, our teachers are using two new programs to assist students in becoming successful readers.
Heger-Tee and Ufly are two evidence-based intervention programs that address phonics-based skills. Our students are doing both of these programs daily during the early intervention time.
Our teachers are excited to have these two fabulous programs to assist our students in strengthening their reading skills.
Reading and STEAM were also part of our recent event when we hosted grandparents' theme night and book fair. We had a wonderful turnout with groups of students, grandparents, and special guests in attendance. There were many activities to engage students and guests in science, technology, engineering, art, and math.
Additionally, the book fair was open late so students could shop with their special guests. Raymire was also on hand as well to take pictures of students with their grandparents and friends. A great time was had by all.
Hey, Paris, did you hear about the book that went to the chiropractor? It was because it was having some trouble with its spine.
Wow, a joke about a book. What a novel idea.
In other news, we are super excited to be able to showcase the many talents of our students who worked extremely hard to be ready to show their acts. At our talent show, we had singers and dancers perform at the show.
There was even a special performance from our teachers in a special showing to our student body. We are so proud of our students for having the confidence and positivity to show Arlene Miro has talent.
Well, that's about all the time we have. Thanks for visiting. We'll see you later. Bye.
Good job, honeybees.
Also busy like bees were those who took part in the recent Shawmet High College and Career Night, a great evening for our students to learn more about the opportunities that could be a part of their future.
Associated Terminals also visited our high school campus for some hands-on learning, safety lessons, and some insight about the many jobs that are available working on the river, and how to best prepare for interviews, no matter what job your students pursue.
If I had any advice for you guys, because I didn't know what I was going to do, I just knew there's so many opportunities up there. If you are interested in any of them, just dive in, you know, do your research, be prepared, because when you're prepared, that's where confidence comes. And then, yeah, you might stumble upon a great opportunity like I did, and then you actually love what you do every single day.
Another visitor also made a big splash on the Davies Campus when the Saints All-Star and team captain Cam Jordan visited. He was funny, charming, inspiring, and very unselfish with his time. We appreciate him and the Saints organization for making this visit possible.
If I can be upset about something, I can find a solution for it as well. So you have to be able to take that as a solution. Don't, just because you have a problem, don't create excuses. Excuses aren't going to help you succeed. This is going to be a reason to hold you back.
We'd also like to give a shout-out to Shawmet High School senior.
Peyton Schiller.
Who was recently named as a National Merit Scholarship Commended Student, representing the top 2% to 3% of those who take the test. We commend her academic excellence.
And speaking of excellence, as October is National Principal Month, we'd like to thank our excellent school leaders for all they do each day. These passionate and compassionate educators truly make a difference and are creating a legacy of learning each day.
Thanks to them, and thanks to all of you for tuning in. For Sarah Felton, Jack Jackson, me, and all the tech kids in Fred A. Bass Control, we thank you for tuning into this on Super News, where we always let...
The Super News roll! Bye, guys.
Thank you so much, Ms. Felton, and thanks Barry Lemoine and Jack Jackson. We appreciate the super news. It's wonderful to see all the positive, great things our students and principals, by the way, Happy Principals Month, and that our faculties and staffs do for our children every day. So thank you for those highlights. And are there any questions of any board members at this time?
I would like to do a little fun fact. We filmed the super news a few weeks ago before Students of the Year were announced, and Italy, I think her name's Gaddis, her last name Gaddis, she is actually Smith's Student of the Year. So she was a host on the super news today, and she's the Student of the Year. So I wanted to give her a little shout-out. Thank you, guys.
The students are always amazing announcing the super news. They are funny, and they are mature beyond their years. Very nice. Okay, anyone else? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Ochsner Partnership and Sports Management. Ms. Voeche.
Yeah, we would, you know, we're very fortunate in our community to have Ochsner here, and they've been tremendous partners with us for several years in many different endeavors that we have partnered with them. But lately, we, for this year, have moved our sports management program and formed that partnership with the Ochsner Group. So I asked Laney Fast, who is the CEO at the hospital, to come in, talk a little bit about the partnership, and she can introduce her fellow Ochsner people with her tonight, and then we can possibly have a little discussion about it. So Laney, if you would, go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that introduction, Doris. Good evening. As Doris mentioned, I'm Laney Fast, the CEO. I do want to quickly introduce the team members that I have with me this evening, which is starting with our Chairman of the Board, Mr. Ray Loga. I have Dr. Shannon Good with us as well. We have our AVP of Operations at the hospital, Ms. Kim Ellander. And then joining us from Ochsner Sports Medicine is the Director, Jordan Lambert. So this is our team. So we have many things at the hospital that we've been very excited about. Of course, our quality has been nationally and regionally recognized, and part of being Ochsner Health and coming here this evening is one of the things that really delight us because, being part of Ochsner, we have access and resources to nationally-recognized programs, one of them being the James Andrews Sports Medicine Institute. So we have partnered with the school board earlier this year, and we wanted to let Mr. Lambert come and talk a little bit more about his program. But before we do that, we're very excited because we've partnered not only with the school board, but also with Ochsner Health with the hospital as well. So what that means is that most of the care that will be provided will be provided locally, unless there's an extreme need, and then those students would end up at the Elmwood Campus, potentially. But as Jordan will talk more about prevention and injuries, I'm going to hand it over to him. That is our priority.
Hey, how are y'all doing? My name's Jordan Lambert. I'm the System Director for Ochsner Andrews Sports Medicine Institute. So, yeah, we're very excited to enter into this partnership, be able to provide care for the St. Bernard Parish athletes, for the student athletes of Shawmet High. Like Laney said, a couple of years ago, we were fortunate to be able to partner up with Dr. Andrews and Andrews Medicine. Dr. Andrews is a world-renowned sports medicine orthopedic surgeon. If you're not familiar with him, you can send him a thank-you card for the St. Super Bowl, because he's responsible for Drew Brees' shoulder. He's a fantastic human, great surgeon. You know, over the last couple of years, we've really seen these two organizations, us and his, grow a lot through, you know, sharing of best practices, research revolving injury prevention, student athlete performance, mental health, and, you know, just a myriad of things, and so, which has really raised the high bar that we set for ourselves when it comes to care for our student athletes. It truly just raised it even higher, and we're excited to bring that high quality of care to St. Bernard Parish. So when I talk about that care team, we kind of pride ourselves on a continuity of care at Ochsner Andrews Sports Medicine. When I say that, you know, we have an entire care team that goes from the first line of defense, being your athletic trainers, who are going to be there day in and day out with the athlete, with the coach, is making sure performance is there, but making sure safety is a priority as well for those student athletes. You know, and then we have our fantastic team of primary care sports medicine doctors. We have one of them with us tonight, Dr. Shannon Good, who's going to be the team physician for Shawmet High. She'll be there. Dr. Good lives in Shawmet, and excited to say, as of, I think, last month, she's doing one-day-a-week clinic for sports medicine and orthopedics in St. Bernard Parish as well. So she's fantastic. I would trust her with my care, with my kids' care. Hopefully, you don't have to see her ever, but if you do, she's here. So, yeah, moving through...
Jordan'll see her every Friday night at the home game along the sidelines. She is there, she's right there with the team and the athletes, so she's been just wonderful with our team and with our players the whole season.
She's fantastic, yeah. So, and then moving through that, you know, we have an incredible physical therapy team, strength and conditioning coaches, mental performance and mental health, making sure that, you know, even after injury, the student athlete's safety is a priority, getting back onto the field in appropriate timeframe. So I guess I'll finish up with just talking about what Laney was referencing, and that's safety. So I think one of our focuses and our vision for all of our partners, honestly, is safety. I think we all value performance from a student athlete perspective, that's true, but we want to make sure that safety is never put on a lower rung. So I think we are very proud that we are a resource for the Louisiana High School Athletic Association as well. They lean on us for a lot of safety research and opinions and advisements, you know, relating to heat illness, concussion management, cardiac events. So that is our focus, that'll continue to be our focus for all of you, for all of your kids, for all of your student athletes, making sure that safety is that priority. So thank you again. We're incredibly excited to be here, incredibly excited for this partnership, and hopefully it's a very long and successful one. So thank you, guys.
So talking a little bit about care locally, so as we've mentioned, Dr. Good is here on campus. Our physical therapy teams have gone through training for all of the protocols with the James Andrews Institute under Jordan's leadership as well, and we're going to continue providing great care. We've recently also installed a new MRI system within the hospital. It went live last Tuesday, so it's a new Siemens, and it does additional eight procedures that we weren't doing before, which are all orthopedic-related. So again, we're very happy to be here and delighted with this partnership, and Ms. Ellander's going to come up to give a very exciting announcement.
Yeah, I get the fun part. So I am very happy to announce that we will have a James Andrews Event Day here in Shawmet. So November 17th, which is a Friday, Dr. James Andrews will be visiting Shawmet. He will be visiting the high school. He will give a lecture to the high school athletic students. It will involve a tour of the facilities and some one-on-one time with the athletic directors as well, talking about prevention and safety. And then, we'll have a community luncheon as well at the MoMA's?
MoMA Center.
MoMA Center in Plantation, thank you, which selected guests will be invited. He will give a speech and learn a lot more about him. I hear he's a very, very great guy, very great speaker, has a lot of wealth of knowledge, really, really well-renowned in orthopedic surgery, so, and has, you know, from his high-profile work with high-profile athletes. So we're very excited to bring this to the community, and hopefully we will all see y'all there. Thank you.
We had a meeting, was it Tuesday, right? No, today, yesterday.
Yesterday, it was just yesterday, yes.
Today is Tuesday, you know, it's a, yesterday, we had a meeting to talk about this particular day, so we set up that we will have this luncheon that's going to be on Friday, November 17th, and it will be at the MoMA Center, and of course, everyone here is invited. But I'm really thrilled, this partnership with Dr. Andrews, you know, I'm an older person, and so, and was very involved in sports and such as well, so from my generation, he's extremely well-known. You know, as we were growing up, he was doing all the, what, the Tommy John surgeries and such on major athletes. Now, I think he does a lot of consulting in that regard as well, but I think he's going to be just a wonderful, I guess, speaker with our kids. He's going to have that personal interaction with them, with the athletes, and with our coaches, and with our trainers, and hopefully, that's going to be the first, maybe, of many experiences that we can have together with him. So after he meets at Shawmet High in the morning with the athletes and the coaches and such, then we will have the luncheon at the MoMA Center. So we're really excited about it, and we're in the process of planning it as we speak, so.
It's going to be a wonderful event. Again, he's super dynamic, he's very interested and really passionate about what he does, and he's also passionate about our partnership, and this will actually be a first within the Ochsner system. Shawmet High is the first high school that he has spoken to in Louisiana area, so we're very excited about that, so we can't wait. We're happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Well, not a question, but I've heard of Dr. Andrews also, and he is very renowned, and for many, many years, and we're very fortunate to have him come to Shawmet High School and to St. Bernard Parish. You know, I mean, he's known throughout the country, and so it's great. Laney, did you, how did you get him to come? That's awesome.
It was a group effort, but...
His name is all of Ochsner. Now, the orthopedics...
Yes, he is a true partner with Ochsner in the sports medicine program, and he does come to visit. It's not the first time he's been to town, but this will be the first high school experience and student experience at this level. So he's done some collegiate, I think he was just Xavier last month, is that correct?
Last week.
Last week. So he does come and pop in, but we're super excited to bring it to the local school level, so.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity and for sharing him with our students, particularly, and we appreciate all that you do, and we're so happy to be partners with Ochsner and to have Ochsner here, local and available to all of our residents, and particularly our students. So thank y'all so much for all that you do.
Thank you, and it's going to be a great event. I did want to ask, Dr. Good, do you have anything that you would like to share with the group?
Sure. So I'm not just a, I don't just see athletes. Another term for my position would be non-operative orthopedics. So while we are the sports medicine department, and we see a lot of concussions, aches, sprains, things like that, I treat a lot of degenerative joint disease, arthritis, things like that. So it's not just the Shawmet High School or middle school athletes that can come see me at the hospital, it's any person 12 or older with any aches, pains, or joint pain.
Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Even the geriatric crowd is...
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Rodney?
Just a comment, I'm very excited about this program, the fact that, just that your behavior, Dr. Good will be hands-on at the games with our athletes. I'm a kid of the 90s, we didn't have that. You got bumps and bruises, you had to be rushed to the hospital, but I'm very excited, and I know Ms. Dr. Good will do a very awesome job at everything. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we thank all of you for coming tonight, we appreciate it, and again, thanks for all you do. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Safe Schools Advisory Committee, and in your folder before you, you have the advisory committee listed, and the mission statement is that the mission of the Safe Schools Advisory Committee is to advise the Superintendent and the school board on methods and programs to ensure a safe and secure learning environment for all students and staff. And we have representation from board members, from the administration, from the teachers, from the parents, and then, of course, our sheriff, our district attorney, and the judiciary. And those members are the board members Diana, Dyser, Kisa, Rodney, Carly, Jackson, Superintendent Voeche, our three administrators, or Carla Corolla, Principal of Arabi Elementary, Todd Larsch, Principal of Andrew Jackson Middle, Will Schneider, Assistant Principal of Shawmet High, and our three classroom teachers, and forgive me if I mispronounce...
Dulce Aguda.
Dulce Aguda from Miro Elementary, Felix Cuserta from Trist Middle, and Andy Robinson, who is actually with us tonight, thank you for coming, from Shawmet High. And we have three parents from each school level, from elementary, Lacoste is Kayla Chordrich from St. Bernard Middle, is Christian Byrd, from Shawmet High is Shannon Alfonso, and I named the sheriff already, Sheriff Poem, District Attorney, Nikosia, and Judge Bob. And then we'll also include those central office staff members, who we can use as resources, and any, anyone else in the community who is available for mentoring programs, mental health services, and emergency crisis discipline plans. And these meetings will be open to all board members, so please feel free when we set the first meeting, which we will be setting fairly soon, and all board members, of course, are invited to come and can partake, and it'll be open also to parents and whomever is interested. So at that, any questions? Okay, it will be a work in progress. All righty. Next item on the agenda is the approval of, to incorporate the report, the General Committee Meeting of October 10th, 2023, into the October 24th, 2023 regular monthly meeting.
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Ms. Jackson, any discussion? There being none, cast your votes.
Motion passes, 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of September 26th, 2023, is published on October 20th. 2023, is published on October 20th, 2023. There's a motion by Mr. Long. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item are the personnel changes for October 2023. And in your folder, those that are highlighted are in addition to the ones that we had at the committee meeting. And good evening, Ms. Pritchett.
Good evening. How are you doing? Good. Okay, you can see the changes in front of you. Like Ms. Daisart said, the new ones are highlighted. So we have, still have movement going on. We did recognize Phyllis Peabody retiring at the end of December at our last meeting. Still no movement on her staying, but trying.
Putting back, uh-huh.
I'm trying.
Okay, are there any questions? Mr. Long?
Just briefly. See, Ms. Pritchett, I noticed we're losing more bus drivers than we're gaining. We still have a bus driver problem.
We need bus drivers. Yes. Send them to me. At any time of the night, call me, email. We need bus drivers.
Are we still doing advertising or any such?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
And you see, we did just hire one, so they are coming back.
Right. That's good. A good sign.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Pritchett. We appreciate your, your hard work and keeping employees on board. Thank you. Okay. Next item was the approval to issue a request for proposals for wireless network at each of the school district sites. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Next items are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Okay, we'll go to the next one. The board superintendent's notes.
Well, just to include it in your packet of the general fund actual report and the workers' comp fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in net position for this past month, September, well, September of 2023. So that's for your informational purposes. I think you also saw on the SuperNews that the play this weekend, if you had a chance to attend Dracula, a comedy of terrors, and I'll lean more to musicals, but this was really, it was really, a really well-done play. The kids did a super job in a comedy of terrors, so, no, it was, it was magnificent. In fact, I think a couple of the kids in it, it was their first real leading roles, and they did a great job. And I had a couple of the grandmothers who came to see me and said, "You remember you taught us?" And now my grandchildren are there performing. So it, it's really wonderful to see that generational families who are there to support those. We also, just to remind everyone, that Ring Day is Friday, this coming Friday at 9 o'clock or thereabouts, once the kids come from their early morning activity and come into the stadium at that time. It'll be on the football field Friday morning, beginning at 9:00 a.m. The reminder that also on November 1st is Professional Development Day for our teachers, and our students will not have school on that day. So November 1st will be PD Day for all of our staff with the students off that day. November 3rd, I was asked to, Friday, November 3rd is homecoming, if anyone is interested in attending that game. I think, I think there's a charmer reunion that night, too. I'm looking over at the Chalmette High people, oh, no, but I think it's a charmer reunion.
I think that changed. Once that happened, I was like, oh, wow.
Okay. And the, on November 11th, will be Veterans Day and the parade, and our people will be participating there. So there's lots of activities that are coming up during the Thanksgiving and Christmas season. There's going to be so many of them, and so many of our performances and such. But these are the next week or two, so I think we're in for a very jam-packed couple of weeks. And if any of you were able to participate in the drug-free activities on the last week, you saw some wonderful presentations that we had all of the kids come to, and it, I think it, it was, it was just absolutely great. We've also had the Attorney General's staff coming to our middle school, and they've been doing the presentations on the cyber and sexting and all that kind of stuff, and cautioning the kids on what they should be doing and should not be doing as they are using these devices on the internet and on social media. So I think it's really good that they're hearing those voices from outside of the school system as well. And the Attorney General has a specific task force that he sends around to do that. So it was not just our local law enforcement, but it was our state law enforcement as well. So I think those, those assemblies did really, really well. So it's been very jam-packed the last couple of weeks, and it will continue through Christmas in that way.
What about the Day of Reflection?
Oh, how do I forget that? The Day of Reflection breakfast, which is open to the public, you know, tickets are $10, and that is Tuesday, November 14th. And as you remember, we had, for many, many years, had that breakfast on the anniversary of Katrina, on the 29th of August. But what we did last year was switch that to the day that we came back and we reopened, which was that November 14th of 2005. And that is the date each year that we intend to have the Day of Reflection. So that breakfast will be Tuesday, November 14th, at 8:30, and that is open to the community, as I said, as well. And that will be at Chalmette High School, the Ninth Grade Academy Gymnasium. So, thank you, Ms. Daisart.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions about all the activities coming before us? Okay. On behalf of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, we want to congratulate all those seniors who will be getting their rings on Friday. So congratulations to the upcoming class of 2024, and we hope for good weather also.
Hope so.
Okay. Is there a, a motion to adjourn? There is a motion by Mr. Campbell, and a second by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you, and good night.